Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, April 21, Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thanks for being here tonight. We have several councilors joining us online as well and on the phone, so we'll get started by reading our role, please, Tom.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Yeah.
Recky?
Here.
Erickson? Erickson? Kylie?
Here.
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
All right. To give our invocation this evening, we have Pastor Kirk Flah. I hope Pastor Kirk is on the phone with us from Abiding Savior Free Lutheran Church. Pastor Kirk, are you there?
I am here, Mayor Tanaken.
All right. Pastor Kirk and I have been down to Haiti several times together before, so I've seen the best and worst of Pastor Kirk. So thanks for being on the line, sir, and we look forward to your invocation, so we'll all stand for that, Pastor, and then we'll stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, so the floor is yours.
All right. Yeah, thank you, and again, I appreciate being able to do so and very much miss being there with you all. It's just such a unique time for us, but grateful to be able to have the privilege of praying tonight and opening up with a word of prayer. And I have to confess, though, Mayor Tanaken, that I disappointed you today. I failed you. I didn't get in a mile or two today for your 100-day, 100-mile challenge, but I did get a good start on a sermon for Sunday, so I hope that that counts for something anyway. So I'm going to take opportunity to share just a single verse of Scripture and then pray, but on my heart tonight was a text from the Book of Proverbs, Proverbs 21, verse 31, that says, "A horse is prepared for the day of battle, but victory belongs to the Lord." Another translation is, "Do your best, prep for the worst, then trust God for the victory." And I want to just commend all of you as leaders, and Mayor Tanaken especially, just thank you for your leadership at this time. I really believe that we're at a good spot. You're doing your best. You know, we've prepped for whatever may come, and ultimately and finally, we look to our Lord for victory in this. And I want to, on behalf of, I know, our city and our church family for sure, just give thanks for our leaders and your self-sacrificial service and your wisdom, even in these days, all the more we're thankful for you and thankful for the privilege of praying for you all the more. Lord, we do come tonight humbly to your throne of grace. We recognize the provisions that are being made even now, and, Lord, the wise counsel that has been received and that we are following. We give thanks for that. I want to thank you especially for these leaders, and, Lord, for your gracious provision of them, oh God. And I ask, Lord, that you would continue to grant wisdom as never before unto those that are leading us. We thank you for them, and we ask God for your favor and your grace for them, especially in this night, again, another full agenda and a lot of conversation. I pray, God, that you would guide and lead and direct. I pray as well tonight for all of our medical community and those especially on the front lines of this COVID virus. We would pray for them, your hand of protection upon them, and especially, Lord, those most vulnerable amongst us. We want to ask for your continued favor and protection there as well. Lord, thank you for this great city. Thank you for these remarkable leaders, and, Lord, I thank you for the opportunity we have to come and to pray. And we ask now, Lord, your favor and your mercy upon this night, upon the decisions of this night, and we pray your hand of protection over this city, over this state, over our country, and even over this world, oh God. Might you continue to rule and to reign supreme. And, Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to come humbly to your throne of grace, asking for your help and for your mercies. We commit now this evening to you and to your care. In Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Pastor Kirk.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
All right, council, we'll move on to item four. It's our consent agenda. Look for changes or motions there.
Move approval.
Second. Sale.
All right. Motion approved by Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that, council? All right. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 21. It's our regular agenda for the evening. Look for a motion on that.
Move approval.
Second. Sale.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve that. Any discussion on our regular agenda, council? All right. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We're at our general public input portion of our agenda for tonight. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than 30 minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than, excuse me, three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. It'd be a long night otherwise. General public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on in our agenda. For regular agenda items, following general public input, the comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So at this time, I'd like to invite anyone forward for general public input again on any items that aren't on the agenda later on. And clerk, please note, our time right now is 7:07. Anyone for general public input tonight?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm David Zalkitis, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about barriers to civil rights lawsuits. Well, why would you need a civil rights lawsuit in the first place? We need police. We need laws, but sometimes things don't work out the way they should, so a lawsuit might help everybody involved regain their sense of decency and respect for citizens and the Constitution. Now, there's a lot of barriers to civil rights lawsuits, and here's the first one. It's this solemn oath that people take when they get into office, and they have the solemn oath to defend the Constitution, but sometimes they don't really believe that. And police will take your complaint for more theater, but they don't really, really care. They just pretend. So you got to be careful about that. Another real problem is that the government alleges that it has no responsibility for the actions of police. That's hard to believe, but that's the impact of this particular ruling, Monell versus New York Social Services. Government trains police, but doesn't care what they do. It's kind of amazing. Another problem is that you have to show a pattern of civil rights abuses to win your lawsuit. Really hard to do, really expensive, and eliminates most lawsuits. All right. And you have to be quick if you decide to sue because you only have 180 days to file claim according to South Dakota law. Not very nice to the litigants, but, you know, that's the law. Another problem is it's really hard to get evidence from the police. You can't do it without a court order. You can't get a court order without a lawsuit, and you can't get a lawsuit without evidence. Bit of a problem there. And then, if you catch police in the act of perjury, nobody really seems to care, so that's a definite issue. Makes litigation much more difficult. And lawyers seem to have a problem with actually respecting evidence. They can say precedent means A when it means B, and cite laws that are irrelevant. Nasty, nasty. Another problem is that the jury pool is drawn from a biased group of people. It's not fair and impartial. And there's the reasons why the jury pool itself is biased. And from there, you get biased jury selection. All of those factors enable people to eliminate jurors, and it just stacks the jury in one favor against the litigants, really. Another problem is you can't sue individual people. You have to sue the government. Nice to have that kind of protection. And of course, evidence can disappear if you're not careful, because police don't maintain their evidence for very long, because it's expensive. And you can't find a lawyer, because there aren't any. You got to do it yourself. Lot of problems there. And I think we definitely need some reform for making civil rights litigation much more reasonable. And of course, there's spring. Enjoy the weather.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening for general public input? All right. See none clerk. Let's move on to our next item.
Item 23, new 2020 retail wine insider license and 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for McNally's Irish Pub, 6211 Old Village Place. Item 24, new 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Eastway Sports Lounge and Grill, 3201 East 10th Street. Item 25, new 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for The Thirsty Duck, 945 South Marion Road, Suite 101. Item 26, new 2020 retail wine insider license and 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Expedition League Incorporated, 1401 West 33rd Street. Item 27, new 2020 retail wine insider license and 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Shopping Cart North, 1029 North Minnesota Avenue, pending permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 28, request to include video lottery terminals with the new 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Shopping Cart North, 1029 North Minnesota Avenue, pending permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 29, new 2020 retail wine insider license and 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Shopping Cart Northeast, 2701 East 6th Street, pending permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 30, request to include video lottery terminals with the new 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Shopping Cart Northeast, 2701 East 6th Street, pending permit issuance and final inspections per building services. Item 31, transfer of 2020 package liquor license from 69th Street Looks Market LLC, 500 East 69th Street to 69th Street Looks Market LLC, 6213 Old Village Place. Item 32, transfer of 2020 retail liquor license and 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license from Granite City Restaurant Operations Incorporated, 2620 South Louise Avenue to Granite City Incorporated, Granite City Food and Brewery, 2620 South Louise Avenue, CUP not required. Item 33, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Sioux Falls Sister Cities to be operated at Avera IT Parking Lot, 230 South Phillips Avenue, 200 South 2nd Avenue, South 2nd Avenue between East 10th Street and South 3rd Avenue for German Fest on September 12, 2020. Item 34, new 2019-20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for McKenzie River Pizza, 234 South Main Avenue.
All right.
There we have Jamie on the line.
Jamie's on the line. All right. Jamie, anything we need to know about on those?
You'll need to unmute your microphone, please.
Are you on mute, Jamie?
Yeah. Nope, I'm here.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We got you.
Okay. The applicant for items 27 to 30 wanted me to add that he does not intend to open these facilities until the COVID restrictions are lifted. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the other items.
Got it. Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items? All right, councilors, do you have any questions for Jamie on the line? Look for a motion here.
Look for a motion here.
Jamie, you can go ahead and mute. Yeah, I think you're done. Thank you.
Move to approve.
All right. Have a second on that?
Second. Sale.
All right. Seconded by Sale. Motion by Selberg. Any discussion, council? Take a vote, please.
If the folks on the line can mute their lines, please.
There we go. Thank you. We'll take a vote now.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky? Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Pretty sure that passed eight to zero. We'll move on to our next item, item 35.
Item 35, second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, establishing a state home order for the City of Sioux Falls for containment of the COVID-19 pandemic. This item is expected to be withdrawn from consideration.
Counselor Kylie?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at this time and at your request, I move to withdraw item number 35.
All right. Motion to withdraw. Do we have a second on that?
Second. Sale.
All right. We have a motion to withdraw by Kylie, seconded by Counselor Sale. Counselor Kylie, you want to speak at all, any more to that?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I have nothing more to add, but if you are interested in adding some more, you are welcome to pass a gavel and address the item.
Okay. I may actually do that, Marshall. Is that all right? I'll have Marshall chair this item, then. I know there's people here to speak to that. This is not really a surprise to anyone after our meeting. For those of you who attended our meeting on Friday, we had a long meeting about this topic, talked about four hours on this topic. The conversation since the time we put this on for first reading into where we land today is one of evolving data points and evolving circumstances. Where we sit today in Sioux Falls, South Dakota is we're currently the 11th hottest MSA in the country in terms of COVID cases per capita. So it's certainly a real situation we're dealing with here in Sioux Falls. We also, though, have both of our healthcare systems saying, based on the lower-than-expected hospitalization rates, and we actually have one of the lowest death rates right now in the country based on our cases. They say we are ready to handle our surge come May into June. If you weren't here Friday, the conversation was, we can handle this surge. It will be an unprecedented volume for us to handle if these numbers do continue to hold. So the statement that I just want to make then tonight is, with their support, the healthcare systems, as well as the support of the state, I do, I am asking for withdrawal of that. I do want to be clear, though, that this should not send a message of complacency in Sioux Falls right now. And I'm worried that it sends a little message of spiking the football, all right, that, hey, we're good. We don't have to do this. We're still in the first inning of this. So the efforts that we've undertaken to date with social distancing, with good hand hygiene, with some of the practices you see in this room, you know, I see two masks in this room. Should be a lot more masks on in this room if I had my druthers as well. We can't let up right now, and so for the next 30 to 45 days, that's continuing to be very important. I have to take my mask off to talk, sir, otherwise, and it'll go right back on. So that's why we're withdrawing this item or proposing a withdrawal of this item. I've spoken with most of the councilors, either by email or someone on my team at least has on this. And so that's where we sit on this today. So, Marshall, I guess we'll open it up for public input, and then we'll take a vote on the motion to withdraw after that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. Public input, come on up.
I want to clear something with this mayor here.
State your name, please.
Sierra Bruce Sard. If the mayor would have put this shelter in place, it had to go by council, and it would have been voted down. If we put a shelter in place, it's not going to go through. The police department is against it. We're not in World War III. Our numbers have been down. Jill Franklin is getting people paranoid that we're in a chemical warfare. We can't get out of our houses here. So I want to make it clear to the mayor, because I made citizens that voted for you to email council members, thousands of people that were against your shelter in place. So I don't know which reason the backing down was from, but if you would have went through, the council wouldn't have put it through. You had thousands of people that voted for you that was against this. So when you want to use your power here, you got to think about the people that voted for you, because we had rich people in the southeast side of town. We had your central part of town that was against this. And all of these people, most of them voted for you, and I think that council members can vouch for that. How many emails did y'all get that was against this? I literally pushed this issue from the rich to the poorest, and most of these people voted for the mayor. So if the mayor wants it in place, that's fine, but he has to go through his channels. And I don't think with all the emails and the citizens pushing council members to so say lobby that we don't need a shelter in place really worked out. So I think he had a fight on his hands here. You produced this to council, and it would have got shut down. So let's put politics aside. Let's get the economy back to working up again here, guys. We cannot be like this, held prison in people's houses and fear that they can't go to grocery stores, and they have to have 10 or less people here. We got to get our economy back up together again. Let's listen to what Christine Noem says. Christine Noem was elected by the state officials, I mean, by the state citizens. She knows what she's doing evidently, because y'all probably voted for her, too, to make the best decisions in y'all's state here. Going against Christine Noem is not the way to do it here with a shelter in place here, and she will not be putting a shelter in a place here. And I stress, we are not in a chemical warfare. We're not. On Friday, it looked like a general hospital soap opera here. Everybody had their mouth on like a general hospital soap opera. I mean, are you kidding me? This is not, we can't be playing politics here. And Sanford and Abella has not been full of their patients. And I hope on this COVID-19 that Jill Franklin sits down somewhere and retires after this, because on Friday, the numbers and the stuff that she was giving was outrageous and bizarre. This is not right. I hope that all of y'all's emails that y'all got from the citizens here of Sioux Falls, y'all listen to them, and y'all did not vote for this, for the mayor to put the shelter in place. We do not need a shelter in place, and we need to start making our economy back up together again. Start raising up that number from the 10 people or less to 15 or 20 people in a public accommodation here, because businesses are hurting here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up. Yep, when you're ready, come on up. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Lloyd Ringrose. I live in Sioux Falls, and I have for many years, well, Greg, good to see you. Yeah, I just wanted to, I know the issue has been withdrawn, and so it's a dead issue. I just wanted to say a couple things. When I heard about this proposal, I'll be honest with you, I was frightened. I was scared that my government on any level would consider exercising this kind of power. I was, this isn't the kind of country, no matter what the crisis, there's got to be a better way than taking our civil rights away. So I just wanted to say, add my two cents, I voted for you, Mr. Mayor, and with all due respect, I will not be voting for you again. But I appreciate the leadership of the council, and I just wanted to put my two cents in. I was frightened when I heard about this, and I'm glad it's dead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? If you're ready, come on up. Good evening.
Thank you for letting me express my concerns.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, Molly Schaefer.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me express my concerns here today. I am concerned that the governor was asked to call for a shelter-in-place order. The executive branch does not have the power to create laws. The purpose of executive orders is only to enforce existing laws. I am also concerned because shelter-in-place orders are unconstitutional. They violate the 14th Amendment, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of the law. When a shelter-in-place order forces businesses to close, that is taking property without due process of law. Perhaps it is for the public good. When the government takes private property for public use, it must pay fair market value for that property. Shelter-in-place orders are also a violation of our liberty. They are the equivalent of placing people under house arrest without trial or any evidence at all. Shelter-in-place orders are a violation of our First Amendment rights, religion, assembly to petition the government. If gun stores are forced to close, then it is a violation of our Second Amendment rights. Rights come from God, and it's the job of government to protect those rights, even during times of crisis. Government has a duty to protect human life. However, many of our actions risk other people's lives. We risk others' lives anytime we drive anywhere. I'm glad that those laws help, that we have laws to help reduce that risk. I'm also glad that there are legal procedures to help those accused of crimes. For example, the police must have reasonable suspicion to pull people over. Those accused of a crime have the right to remain silent, the right to an attorney, the right to know what crimes they're being accused of, and many other rights. We could save many people's lives without all these rights. We could save many lives, driving were declared illegal forever except for essential services. The problem with lockdowns is that the due process of law is not being followed. People are living under house arrest and having their businesses destroyed without any due process. I am concerned that lockdowns don't save lives. Many experts say that the virus cannot be eliminated, only slowed. The goal was to not overrun the hospitals. Not only are the hospitals not overrun, Avera is furloughing staff and reducing hours. Many people believe that China defeated the virus with a strict lockdown. There is a reason to question any information that comes from China's government. I lived in China for two years. I enjoyed it very much. The people are wonderful. However, they do not have the same freedoms that we have. For example, Facebook, Google, YouTube, any information about the Tiananmen Square massacre, and any information critical of the government is banned. I have many heartbreaking stories of how my friends have suffered at the hands of the Communist, Chinese Communist Party. I'm concerned that America is no longer the land of the free, and whenever you make future decisions, please consider the Constitution.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kader Ower, City Council. I want to thank you all for your leadership in this difficult time. I know when you are in a public eye, you're going to be criticized. You're going to be clapped for you. Some people agree with you, some not. I proud of your leadership, Mr. Mayor. You changed your opinion because you found out what is going to be in stake and what's going to be, but this thing is not over yet. We have a problem. We have a danger disease in there. We don't know much about it. I encourage you guys to stay together and take a leadership of our city and bring people back together and remind us how we protect ourselves, and at the same time, how we protect our freedom in this beautiful city and this country we're living in. When the government is unfair and telling us not to do this and this, it's going to be tough for some of us to accept it. My father and my culture has taught me, when you speak to people, you have to show them respect, and I hope everybody coming to this city hall to show you guys respect and talk properly with you and criticize you. And if you deserve it, I will criticize you. And you remember, Mr. Mayor, I told the two persons running for in the city mayor, I said, if you taken it, and your commitment is not to fail, I will going to be there and tell you what you did wrong or right. So I encourage you guys and encourage people in the city of Sioux Falls, don't think this is over. And like you said, Mr. Mayor, everybody, open a door and start playing football. It's not. We still have to protect ourselves, but we have to encourage people to stop talking about negativity and scaring each other. And I not told you guys that last time. I went home a couple days ago. My granddaughter with my wife right from the door, and I went to her to grab her, and my wife just yell at me, scream at me, "Get back. Go wash your hands. Go change your clothes before I touch my granddaughter." Why? Because she hears so many negativity. We put in this our Facebook and our social media, we scaring out each other. A lot of us really mentally and physically affected. And I guarantee you guys, I have 10, 12 businesses crying for help. Nobody helping from ethnic community. Okay? Everybody want to, I'm sorry, Smithfield is closed. We have 3,500 people is without paycheck. And those who call theirself care about refugee immigrant and immigrant and ethnic community, where they are. Nobody going to willing to get $10 out of their own pocket to helping. Nobody, because I asked people already, anybody capable to help those people paying rent. So again, I'm not going to lose my speaking in here, but encourage you guys, keep encouraging us how we protect ourselves and how we have social listening and how we help our economic and community come back together. So again, you backing up in your decision, many people proud of you. Many people is using political game in the city of Sioux Falls. I know this city better than many, many people. I know how the politics of it work, and I know Republican and Democrat and people pushing one another. Let's put this all aside. We are people in Sioux Falls, and we protecting ourselves and our family for a future of our community. And thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Hello?
My name is Anne Lenars. I understand that you guys have been doing your best to appease the public and your own conscience by proposing things like stay at home orders. What I'm here to do is accept reality as it is and do my part to influence a better future outcome and a better direction to go by calling for a focus on holistic health. Coronavirus is not the only cause of illness and death in this world. What we're seeing is that when you compare places of relatively equal population size, the places that force people to stay home through government hands had doubled the infection rates. We see states with stay home orders seeing serious spikes in suicide rates, some even reporting higher suicide deaths than COVID deaths. Health involves a complex set of interconnected systems and reflects balanced focus to support your physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual wellbeing. I would like to encourage our city council to do something seemingly unprecedented in this crisis and account for the whole puzzle. My first recommendation is to publicly disperse research explaining ways to boost immune strength. Tell people how vitamin D is the best antiviral there is and our body produces a decent quantity with at least 20 minutes of sun exposure on the skin. Share how clinical studies have proven that two hours of nature sounds a day can reduce stress hormones by up to 800% and activates 500 to 600 DNA segments known to be responsible for healing and repairing the body. Staying shut in your house is going to weaken your immune system. And while you're not punishing people for going outside with this, everything you're doing, you're also not telling them why it's not just optional, but necessary to go outside. Explain to them the benefits of vitamin A, C, D, E, and zinc in immune health and what foods it's in, so they know what to buy. I can tell you right now, all the food that left the shelves first was pizza and ramen. The health food stayed. The why is super important. My second recommendation is to accommodate for the depression, emotional trauma, and wave of PTSD that is beginning to manifest. This will be easier to mitigate if you get ahead of it rather than waiting to respond when it becomes severe and unmanageable. For starters, please stop calling it social distancing and start calling it physical distancing in all public communications. Second, encourage social interactions in what is deemed safe measures with clear examples and offerings rather than vague suggestions. I would love to see a digital block party. Most importantly, I am calling on our city to allocate funds to offer free online counseling services to anyone struggling during this crisis. Perhaps even partnering in this with nonprofits like NAMI or AFSP. We cannot leave the way to the suicide hotline to take the call when someone is at their breaking point. We also can't expect the local churches to handle this giant influx, even though I know that we are all doing our best. People need to be able to seek counsel before the problem seriously escalates, as it has other places. You need to think of any increase in suicide rates and domestic abuse as the same kind of blood on your hands as you would think of increased COVID deaths as blood on your hands. Air public debates about what economic health actually means and allow people to ask questions in open forum to prepare them for the long-term ramifications of what happens when businesses shut down and the reserve floods the market with monopoly money. People don't understand why we need an open economy and why that's crucial. The why is where true clarity and communication is found. And when you don't share that with the public, you're asking for dissent, conflict, and feelings of oppression based on your decisions. Explain how quick fixes to any situation in any of these categories almost always carries a heavy price tag in the long term. Just like taking ibuprofen to reduce the fever in the moment actually prolongs your sickness because your body needs the fever to win the fight. If people can grasp the concept that the only questions right now are, one, will the price be paid now or later? And two, how big do we want the price tag to be? Perhaps we can all come to a more level-headed place to discuss the options with sound minds of reason, being driven by our love for one another rather than fear and paranoia. In conclusion, if the only thing you do right now is tell people to hide until this is over, you will fail in what I know is your heart's mission to help people and save lives. That's why we get into public service in the first place. Because we care about the quality of life of every person. I implore you not to put COVID blinders on. Take them off and see the whole picture. There's no single fix to this problem. We will only survive it if we address the holistic health of each individual, of our city, of our society, and we all do our part to contribute as best we can in every area of the problem. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
I'm hopeful, I'm also grateful that, uh, we finally came to our senses that we're not gonna come in to stay at home. You talk to a lot of businesses, you talk to a lot of people that are out of work. They're ready to go back to work. What they're trying to figure out is why a city and a city council can't figure out how we can get business leaders together to be able to get 20 to 30 patrons in their, in their establishment. We, uh, quarantine Smithfield or we shut them down. After the last meeting, I had a gentleman call me on Thursday morning telling me that he had a phone call from a bait shop up in Pier. He told me that there were people from Sioux Falls Smithfield plant up buying bait and they're fishing. Now to me, we closed them down to try to figure out what? What did we try to figure out? Uh, 3,700 people, we shut it down. Why didn't we just keep them working? And then at least it would have been at the plant, not up in Pier. Okay, now we're going to JB, the, uh, meatpacking plant in Worthington. As I said, when I was here on Wednesday, there's eight, nine, 10 people living in these houses that, uh, these people work at, at Smithfield. This guy came out, this mayor came out, said the same thing. He says, it's hard to quarantine one person when you have six, seven, eight, nine people that are living in the same house. But yet these six, seven, or eight, nine people, they work around the towns. They don't all work at the plant. We have people in Sioux Falls that go to work at this plant. What is the city doing for the citizens of Sioux Falls to show that these people that, uh, drive back and forth to Worthington every day that they're not carrying the COVID-19? I bet you they haven't even thought of that. I wonder why? You know, the farmers are hurting. I talk to farmers every day, they're killing their pigs. Chickens are throwing the eggs away, milk, they're dumping it. It's time to get this back together. I'm glad we're having the races up in Park Jefferson this weekend. One hour, 752 tickets sold. People are ready. People are tired. People are tired of playing the games. Everybody called me up and said, did you watch the, did you watch the, uh, meeting on Friday? I said, no, I said, I had to work. Well, you gotta come up and you just gotta look at it because it's, this COVID-19 just didn't start last week. This has been here for some time. Now we're playing games? I always tell people, stop watching fake news. Because that's all they're gonna do is put the fear in you. They make it sound like it's so bad, but yet H1N1, did we shut the city down? No, we didn't. Any other, any other diseases that, uh, has come from China, we haven't shut a single one of them down. We haven't shut this town down at all, but yet people died. Did we care? Heck, no, we just went on with our merry old lives because nobody even really knew about that H1N1. I remember the mayor stating that, uh, he went to China to, uh, do business with China, went with some of the big leaders from Sioux Falls. Would this be a, would this be somebody that you'd want to do business with in China? On how they treat their people, on how they kill their people? What we should be doing is trying to figure out how we can bring manufacturing back to Sioux Falls, giving people jobs and being able to look at what China builds in, that is taken from America. Maybe what we should do is bring those back to the United States so we can have American-made products again.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome.
My name is Joy Howe. And as the first gentleman said, um, in our constitution, I'm gonna read it. Article six, paragraph three. All executive and judicial officers, both of the United States and of the several states, shall be bound by oath or affirmation to support this constitution. The Constitution includes the Bill of Rights. And the First Amendment says, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or the press or the right of the people peaceably to assemble. None of you have any authority to stop any of us from assembling peacefully in any size group, anywhere, at any time, and for any purpose. You have no authority whatsoever because you cannot take away our amendments, our rights. Everybody in this room, everybody in this state should be going out, getting together with their family, having Sunday dinner at their house, going to church on Sunday, and they're going to make that decision based on the level of risk they are willing to take. Not by what some government body, listening to another government body, listening to another government body, tells them. You have no authority. Your job is to protect our rights. And we have the right to peaceably assemble, anywhere we want to, with any number of people we want to. We can go to church on Sunday and you cannot send the police to stop us. They have no authority either. You need to know your job. How many of you have one of these in your pocket? Do any of you? Shame on you. You're supposed to be our government authorities? You don't even know the limits to your power, which is very small. We have the power. You only get it by our consent. Every business in this town better open up tomorrow. These people cannot stop you from being open. We need to take our kids shopping with us tomorrow. I'm appalled, disgusted with the leadership in this city. Shame on you. There's no pandemic? Do your research. I did my research. I don't fear. I don't fear what you can do to me. I don't fear some scamdemic. And none of us should. This is made up baloney to control us and boy, you're doing a really good job. And you need to knock it off and we need to stop bending over for you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is that it? All right, we'll move to the council for discuss, are you coming up? All right. If anybody else wants to speak, I think we've got a mark back there. Just get ready and come on up.
My name is Kathy Sherman. Thank you.
A little closer.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kathy Sherman. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys this evening. And I don't have anything written down. I didn't realize that we were, um, that's my fault. I haven't been up on all of these things, what the procedures were. But, um, I want to thank you personally for withdrawing the stay at home, the shelter in place. I have called many, many times and I appreciate that. Often you hear the negative and I want to say thank you for that step. I do agree with the other previous lady that we need to be getting out. Even the Santa Clara, California studies are showing 50 to 80% times more of the people have been infected. And therefore it drops the percentage of the, the death ratio way, way down to a normal flu season. So I, I'm a musician at my church and I don't take liberty lightly. I had a dad back in the eighties when the state said you are not allowed to have school in your church. I have a picture hanging on my wall of two officers carrying him out of church and dumping him on the ground and padlocking the doors of a church. So I don't stand here and take this lightly. I'm ready to go back to church. If Walmart and Costco and Hy-Vee, my hairdressers, if we can all do that safely, I think it should be a personal risk that we are willing to take. Do a setup like we have here. I think as mayor, I would encourage you, what I would like to hear is a rollout plan. I want to hear some steps that we're gonna start taking to get us opening back up and get the city moving. And like others have said, the more positive emphasis, because every day we hear, people are dying, people are dying. But in reality, I work for several physicians. Death is just the reality of life. It's the cycle that God has set up for us. People live, people die. We all need to be ready for that, for that day when it's our turn. So my encouragement is to you is to present to us some steps that can be taken to start opening this back up so that we can have a, an economy that can sustain a city, our, our parks. I miss that. I'm single, I don't have children. The only children that I get are from church and my ministries. We need this. We need to start opening back up for the mental, emotional, and economic purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Frank Gurnick. Didn't plan on talking tonight. But, uh, the reason you withdraw the ordinance, I believe, is because you, because you allowed democracy to work. You listened to people. Um, I've seen a wide range of emotion and, uh, I didn't know that when we elected you, our expectations that you were gonna be all-knowing and had the ability to have the foresight to know things that we need you to know when the rules change every day. The landscape changes every day. So thank you for your leadership. It's democracy in action. I'm in the business of kids. That's what I do. And what I tell, uh, my membership is, I'm not developing soccer players. I'm developing future politicians, future businessmen, future missionaries, priests, accountants. All essential. But when a threat like this comes to us, we have to deal with it. And we've been closed since March 12th-ish. I really don't know the date because I don't even know what day of the week it is today. Heaven forbid, we really get hit with a challenge that's gonna have to keep us locked up longer. I look at Ann Frank, I don't want to go to an extreme, but she hid in an attic for two years. We've only been confined for, what, 45 days? And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you've got a 100-day challenge out there right now. And I don't believe you've asked us to walk around our yard. I believe you've encouraged us to go out and get the lovely sunshine. I think you've encouraged us to eat healthy. I believe you've tried to communicate. Heck, you're in your garage of all places, holding meetings. So I think you, you've done a good job communicating. Now my challenge to you is gonna be, if this can happen today, we know it can happen tomorrow. Can we have the foresight and the ability to plan for that next challenge, whatever that may be? Because I don't believe for a second anybody in their wildest dreams could see us, what? Four months ago, we had roughly 2,500 jobs in this town that needed people. We've got building all over the place. Everything is good and with the flip of a switch, we're in chaos. I'd follow you in a minute. All of you. You've taken the time to analyze, you've taken the time to bring people together, and you've taken the time to undo something that you wanted to do. Why? Because of the Because of the parade of people. Because of the emails. Because of the meetings that we don't get to see. So I commend you for that. And I look forward to more of it. And as some of these people have said, what's going to be the plan beyond this crisis? Because there's going to be another one. So thank you for the five minutes. I'm going to give my one minute and 25 seconds back to the gentleman sitting in front of me.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public want to speak? All right, we'll move to the council for discussion. Councillors, anybody want to... Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Counselor Selberg. I will explain the second on this motion and why I support rescinding it as its form. My discussions with the mayor over months and several weeks on this subject has always been that he was basing his recommendations on what our two main healthcare systems were recommending. The modeling that we're going through now is so fresh and is so new that there have been so many unknowns that at some point in time, both healthcare systems and the Health Department were saying, "This could overwhelm us. This could be more than we could actually handle in today's situation." And as the mayor has stated, day after day after day, it's a very fluid situation. It changes from day to day, sometimes from hour to hour, based on the information on where the modeling is, how many hospital beds we need. As we progress, and we had the first reading a week ago, it was on Wednesday night, quite a few of your councillors, you heard us say, "We're going to vote to move it forward and hope that the numbers come back, that we don't need to put this stay-at-home order in place." Now, that is what's happened. So now the mayor has come to us, and he said, "Healthcare systems," as we saw Friday, "the healthcare system says we can handle it. It will be overwhelming, or it'd be the largest endeavor we've taken, but they think they can handle it." That's why I do support taking this motion back, rescinding this motion, and not moving forward with this stay-at-home. Heaven forbid something changes to the worse. But as we sit right now today, with the facts we have in front of us, I believe we do not need the stay-at-home ordinance, and that's why I'm going to vote to rescind it.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else want to speak to the item? Counselor Staley?
Well, first of all, I just want to say to the public, I so appreciate the respectful communication that I've received. And I've spent hours responding to emails, and if I didn't get to yours, forgive me for that. But I tried to reach out to as many people as I could. And I will tell you, this room has people on this side of the issue. There are a lot of people on the other side as well. So this is absolutely a very passionate issue for our community. We're all concerned. We all want to do what's best for our community. But again, having a respectful dialogue is so important. And so for those of you who felt so strongly about it, but were able to put your words in a way that was not deprecating to us, I say, "Thank you." Let us not forget, we already have a stay-at-home order that was issued by our governor. I know that seems to be a dirty word here. But Governor Noem put a stay-at-home order for people over 65. I got contacted by a woman. She said, "Teresa, can I go out and go for a drive in my car? I'm 68 years old." I said, "Hey, honey, go for it. You know, we'll call that essential." But we closed our schools down. The governor... So I'm just going to say, you know, there seems to be kind of this sense of, "Well, the mayor did this, the governor's doing this." You know, I don't... The governor's done things as well. It's not like we're the only community in our state that has had concerns about this. So again, thank you for your dialogue. Thank you for your respectful dialogue. I will say, this thing came out of the gate, and I said this last week, but we got a hold of this last Tuesday, late in the day. I started getting emails from people, "Teresa, you've got to vote against this thing." I'm like, "Wait a minute, I haven't even seen it. Give us a chance to digest it." And you know, you've got to say something for the way things unfold. We had a chance here to hear from the public. We all saw it kind of at the same time. We're kind of unwrapping it and hearing from you about the concerns. And, you know, I'm hearing it too, and I'm like, "Yeah, I don't think I want to put a $500 fine on somebody for, you know, going out in their yard." Counselor Neitzert said it so well last week, that, you know, "We don't want people tattletaling on their neighbors for, you know, driving down the street with too many people in their car. I don't want to do that." Also, we've got people, they were clawing their way into our emails, frantically trying to establish themselves as essential. Essential. And what came to me in the midst of this is, I thought, you know, "Let's take the essential business classification away." And what I'm saying is, and I think my colleagues are with me on this, let's turn that around and say to our public, because I'm hearing a lot of people on your side of the table there, that are saying, "Trust us. We know what to do." A lot of people are saying, "We want to do the right thing. We don't need you to legally put police force on that." But let's turn it around and say to the public, "Hey, you... We're going to put it on you. Please, don't leave your home unless it is essential. Limit your time." Now, I know some of you think that you should be able to do whatever you want to. I don't think any of us are really going down that street. So, and I do think there's enough awareness in our town right now that people are on edge, and they're willing to say, "What can we do to help?" They want to help. We have, later tonight, we're going to have a resolution. And because after this started falling apart last week, I said, it came to me, I said, "You know, I think as a council, we need to make a statement." We had an anti-hate resolution a few months ago. It's a statement that we're making to the community to say, "These are things that we think will help." Okay? So if you want to stick around and listen to that, you can. It's not going to have a fine imposed on it, but again, it's, we're still moving into uncharted territory here. So I appreciate your comments. I will be supporting the withdrawal on this. But again, I think we still need to be vigilant and show some responsibility. And I hear you all saying you want personal responsibility to be respected. I get that. Thank you.
Counselor Neitzert?
Yeah, you know, when I and all of the council voted to send this to a second reading, I actually had some calls that some people, they were livid. And I had to call and I had to explain it to them. You know, this is the biggest issue, the vote potentially, in the history of the city, probably the biggest one, definitely during my term. And to respect the process, I want to hear the public's input. And it was also given to us very late. There wasn't a lot of time to look at it. I mean, as was stated by Counselor Staley, we were getting inundated with questions about whether we supported it or not, and we didn't even have it in our hands yet. I can't comment on something I haven't seen. And I wanted to listen to the data that was told that we were going to hear on the Friday. And so we sent it to a second reading. And as one gentleman stated, the process worked. I have never, and I've been doing this now for four years, I have never had anything close to this much input. And we have had some big issues that had mountains of input. I had several hundred, and I don't mean like one or 200, I mean several hundred emails. I spent hours answering almost every single one of them, and I read them. I was literally looking at my inbox, and they were just continually popping in as I'm typing emails, one after the other, and it went on day after day. My phone rang all day long, voicemail after voicemail. I still have piles of phone calls and voicemails that I haven't been able to deal with yet, and I may not get to all of them, and I apologize. But I was gratified by the enormous amount of input. And a lot of it was, I will say, it was, the vast majority ended up being against this. Now, there were some that were passionately for it, and there's obviously two camps are very, very passionate. And so we're trying to balance that. And very quickly, I found that for me, respectfully, I couldn't cross that red line, and it really had to do with, you know, to me, it really came down to, there is no, except there's a pandemic clause in the Constitution. And that's kind of where the line in which I had to draw. Now, of course, no right is absolute, and you've got to figure out where exactly that line is, and it's difficult. But that's where I kind of came down on it. And that was a vast majority of input. And I think what we're seeing nationwide and we're starting to see locally is that as policy lawmakers, we need to figure out how to do something sustainable, balanced, and reasonable. Because if we push it too far, and we're already, we're getting close, both in time and in what we're doing, where the citizens who ultimately we report to and we serve at their pleasure, we don't lord over them, are starting to say, "We're just about to the point where we've had enough." And so we need to be very measured in our responses and not go too far. And so that's, and we're trying to toe this line. I've had some emails from some people that had quite a bit of certitude, that said, "You know, you're doing this wrong, and there's going to be blood on your hands." And, you know, my general response was, "I wish I had the certitude that you did. I'm doing the best I can. I'm trying to make..." We're all trying to make the best decisions that we can. We're fallible. Maybe someday we'll look back and we'll know what the right or wrong answers are. We all care about human life, and we're trying to balance it. And maybe the last thing is, I so much appreciated some of the input from one lady who mentioned the holistic self, because there's so much to it besides just this disease, the mental health, and all of the physical impacts. They're enormous. Humans are just not wired to be isolated. They're social creatures, and this is really, really hurting people. So we just have to continue to try to find that balance and get through this and get this economy open back up and get our lives back. So, but do it responsibly. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody on the phone, the councillors, have any comments? Okay, I'm not hearing any.
Yes, Mayor?
Oh, go ahead. Counselor Reiki?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Selberg. I would just add that I receive volumes of emails, voicemails, text messages as well. And so this has been an issue where clearly the public is engaged, highly engaged. And mine was split fairly evenly, both for and against. And at the end of the day, where I came down was, you know, yes, this is one way to do it, you know, a stay-at-home order. Yes, that's been working in other parts of the country. But is there another way to do it? And the one message that I want to leave with tonight is, and I'm going to use the mayor's term, this is not the time to take our foot off the gas pedal. And what we're doing tonight, I don't believe any of my council members or the mayor is taking our foot off the gas pedal. But what we're saying is, we're going to put our foot on the gas pedal with you, our public, together voluntarily. We're going to beg you, we're going to plead with you, we're going to give you some lists of things that we want you to do. We want you to hang in there. We want you to stay strong. We want you to work with us voluntarily. Because the fact of the matter is, we need another 10% mitigation to put our hospital in a place of comfort, where they fully believe they can handle this. And we have this other impact out there that just happened today, you know, out in Laverne. And that could affect our hospital's capability again. I don't think that was factored into any of the models, that another, you know, that another hotspot could land into our hospital system, and at least part of that hotspot is going to. So the message I want to leave to those that are listening, and I hope a lot of listening, and I hope that all of the people that are emailing and texting are listening, you know, we're not saying stop what we're doing. And I think most of you would agree with us, that these measures need to be done. But do those things that are essential and help us lock down for this next week or two as we start to fly into that surge, and help us protect our medical officials as they try to, you know, as they try to take care of us. Because when this turns into death numbers and individuals that are friends and relatives and family members, it's going to be different. So while I'm totally in support of the motion to withdraw, I also do so with the belief that we're the kind of community that can work together and hold on together and do these things voluntarily and get ourselves through this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? I think we're ready to call for a vote. All right, let's go. Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr? Staley?
Yes.
Reiki?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yep.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Staley.
Just for people who might have just tuned in, can we just say again what that vote was for?
That vote passed eight to zero to withdraw that item.
Yeah, so that was to withdraw the item.
Yeah. Correct. All right, we'll move on to item 36, please. Item 36, second reading, An Ordnance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Extending the Effective Date of Ordinance Number 2920, Adopting the Sioux Falls Board of Health Second Amended and Restated Regulations Pertaining to the Novel Coronavirus COVID-19. All right, Jill Franken, I think, do I have you on the line?
Yes, you do, Mayor.
All right, Jill, you want to just speak to this briefly? I know there's not a lot different on this, but the floor is yours.
I sure can. Again, this is Jill Franken, Public Health Director. And this item is our regulations that are helping to mitigate the spread of coronavirus. These have been in place for about four weeks now, and this would be an extension of that ordinance for an additional three weeks. I just want to make sure you're aware that this would be a three-week extension, and it was done so to overlap with the stay-at-home ordinance should that have passed. And so this runs until 5:15. I am fully confident that this would be an appropriate extension. We will be at the peak of the surge of our cases in mid-May, and so I think running this until May 15th is very appropriate. Vera in Sanford, while not here tonight, our chief medical officers that have been here at past meetings have indicated that it's fine for me to let you know that they fully support this extension of this ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Anyone from the public here to speak on this, come on forward.
Hi there. My name is Tracy Sabo. I just wanted to talk about this. So the coronavirus was first discovered in Wuhan, China, on December 1st. It's been around for longer than that, obviously, because it took that long to find it. We had tens of thousands of people that flew the United States from China to different parts of the country. And I'm going to tell you, some of those people were probably already infected. And I'm also going to tell you that some of those people probably infected people that came through the Sioux Falls Airport in early, like probably late last year. This has been here for a long, long time. It's been here for months. And so we're at the end of this, and I know that that's not a politically correct thing to say, but the science supports it. There was the testing that was done in California that's indicating that 50 to 80 times the amount of people that have actual infections have actually dealt with it without even knowing that they were infected. Antibody testing in Chicago indicates that at least 30 to 50% of the population already has antibodies. So this is not something that is that dangerous. And I know that we've got a lot of fear and paranoia about it being dangerous, but the actual facts indicate that it's not. There was a leading German virologist, Hendrik Streik. Last Tuesday, he released his information. He's been studying the coronavirus in Germany. Now, Germany didn't shut down anything. They actually maintained an open society the entire time that they were dealing with this. And he actually stated that there's absolutely no evidence of virus transmission in supermarkets, restaurants, or hairdressing places. Now, think about that. If there's no evidence of transmission in those places, all of these shutdowns that you've done are completely pointless. The regulations on restaurants are completely pointless. The regulations on businesses are completely pointless. What he says is that severe outbreaks of infection were the result of people being close together for prolonged periods of time. So, you know, like the Smithfield location. But this is not something that you catch from casual contact. You're not going to just catch it by, you know, being next to somebody and, you know, briefly. It takes a little bit more than that, that this is an actual virologist that's talking about this. So all your regulations are pointless. Professor Yitzhak Ben Israel of Tel Aviv University has been plotting this for years. I'm sorry, has been plotting this for, since it started. And he also indicated that it doesn't matter what the government does. This epidemic runs its course in the exact same way. its course in the exact same way it runs its course in Sweden, the exact same way it ran in Israel, where they literally had house arrests for people, not allowed to go anywhere. So again, your regulations are completely pointless. So it's time to open up things. You can vote against this bill right now, and trust that the, the business owners know best how to protect their employees, and protect their customers, and just allow them to make their own choices. The case fatality rate, the mayor even said this, the case fatality rate in South Dakota is very low. It's around 0.5%. So that means, on the condition that you are sick enough to actually need a doctor, which is a very small percentage of the population who catches it, you have a 99.5% chance of, of dealing with it and surviving this with. So I submit to you that all of, that, that the ordinance you passed to, to, you know, regulate customers and regulate businesses, the lingering ordinance, it's completely pointless. You haven't saved a single person's life with that ordinance. You haven't saved a single person's life with that ordinance. What you have done is you've cost people's lives. You know, suicide rates are up, homelessness is up, you know, the homeless shelters are, are growing. And also, the food banks and places that give food are noticing huge, longer lines. So, again, the purpose of these, of fighting the curve was to mitigate the hospital need. But the hospitals don't have need. We, we, we need to get back to running things and let people start living their own lives and making their own decisions. So I would encourage you to vote against this. Let's open up the city. Let, let's let private businesses and private people, let's let free people decide how to solve their own problems without a gun pointed at their head.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Czar Bruce, Sioux Falls. I just got a text message from a citizen that's watching from home and said that the mayor wasn't paying attention to his public input. So, we shall not listen to Jill Franken. The numbers are going down. We need to get the economy back to running again. We're not in a crisis. And I'm sure y'all got emails on that. So it's going to be three weeks, according to Ms. Jill Franken, that's an expert in here. And so coincidentally, we're Sanford and Avera here tonight. They couldn't make it, they couldn't come on the conference call tonight. So, I went and put all my faith in Jill Franken. Like I said before, during the previous mayor here, we couldn't trust his administration, and we sure can't trust Jill Franken either. She's taken a mountain out of a mo-hill. So we need to open this back up, and gradually get people to work in again. Because how is people going to pay taxes in the city? How are they going to make a living? That unemployment only goes for a certain amount of time here. Jill Franken was here, then she went to the back, and then I don't know where she went, but she should have came to the podium and spoke in on the phone. It's not that serious. She can come out to the public, and come to public input, and address the public like we're all doing here. Because she came here around 6:30 tonight. I encourage people to look at this, and, and make your own decision, and don't go by what Jill Franken says. Because Friday's meeting was bizarre. I mean, seriously, we have to come to reality. So we're going to be like this throughout the whole year, and then when, when the corona comes back up again and resurfaces, we're going to repeat this all over again? Of course, some businesses are rich. They can tell their employees to go home, and they will pay them out of their pockets. I know some that are doing it now, that are filthy rich and doing it. Not every person, small businessperson is rich. They can sit there and give their employees checks every week or every two weeks. So Jill needs to come to grips here. The numbers are down. Let's start a little bit, and open it up a little bit, to get the economy going back here. This, if we listen to Jill and, and the governor, the governor said mid-June to peak. We're always hearing peak and insurgent, but yet we're down. Please, do not pass this. And if we do pass it, then put it with the governor to May 31st, and let's stay with the governor in peer. Because one, the city does one thing, and the governor does another thing. We got to be on the same page here. But eventually, we have to open up these doors. We cannot keep people in their houses paranoid to go get their haircuts, to go to the salon, to go to the grocery store, because they're going to catch this and die. But I'm telling you, do your own research, and don't go by what Jill Franken says.
Hello again. I just want to add that my, my stepbrother works at a bar downtown. And he was talking to his boss the other day, and his boss told him, if I can't open in two weeks, I'm done. I'm out of business. So, I would agree with the previous speaker. And I think it's, you know, at some point, you take a risk getting out of bed in the morning, right? Maybe it's time to take a chance, put some precautions into effect, and start to open things up. I would agree with the last speaker. I also want to add, I'm not a doctor, and I don't play when I'm TV, but I heard the most ludicrous thing yesterday, and I just wanted to put it by you. I, there was a doctor being interviewed on the news. And people were sending in their questions for the, the news anchor to ask the doctor, like, how do I protect myself from COVID? How do I do this? You know, how do I, will vitamin C help, whatever? And this one person sent in a question, and the question was this, should I still wear a mask if I'm outside, and I'm not around anybody else? This doctor, I'm sitting there, working out while I'm watching this. And the doctor, and she was stifling a smile, like, I don't think even she believes this, even though she's saying it. She said, well, it might be a good idea, because somebody could cough, and the virus could stay in the air for a couple hours, and you could walk through that cloud and get the virus. I'm sorry. If the virus is that powerful, we might as well just give up right now. It's some super virus from another planet, and we might as well surrender. All right? That's absurd. The first little gust of breeze is going to disperse that outside. It's a common sense. It was the most absurd thing I've ever heard. And the fact of the matter is, these things are circulating around, and they're scaring people to death. I've been in discussions with people on Facebook, who have essentially said, if we don't lock ourselves in our houses, people are going to start dropping dead left and right in Sioux Falls. Enough is enough. We're being, I feel we're being manipulated by the media, by people with an agenda. Anyway, thank you again.
Feel a little alone here tonight. I feel like we kind of won by removing the first ordinance. And so, nice job. You guys are incredibly smart people. I'm probably here. My employees, because Greg Neitzer is so smart and educated last week, we refer to me now as the other Greg N. And so at work, I became the other Greg N.
You should state your, you should state your name for the record.
I am Greg Nelson. I put together a, but I am the other Greg N. at work. I put together a top 10 list, because I grew up with David Letterman, of, of things that we should actually be a little bit happy about, by removing the first ordinance that we went through. And the number 10, if this thing works, I put up, is we should give some praise to the employees of Smithfield Food. Those people, had they not done some form of quarantine on their own in their houses, whether they're living with eight, 10, 12, 200 people in one place, if they hadn't done something wise, we wouldn't be discussing this ordinance. We would be on the first one, and it probably would have passed. That could have been a nightmare in other places. Based on the timelines, there's still a few of those people fighting for their lives right now. Let's not forget those people. I think that's important. But we didn't turn Sioux Falls, South Dakota into Smithfield, South Dakota. And so that's pretty awesome. But I think we should give those employees credit. They all live here. We're here tonight, because those people have done a nice job so far. And so we're kicking the can down another three weeks of, of constraint. I believe those businesses that are constrained can open if they want, with 10 people or less. That's their choice. Some of them closed on their own. But that's my number 10. If those people choose to open, number nine for me is buy local. It may cost you more today, but it'll pay off long-term. We all shop on Amazon. Amazon is not your friend. I have an internet company that do search marketing in large volume, with a brilliant team of guys. Amazon is not your friend. It'll deliver stuff to your door, but it will take your businesses. And if you can afford it right now, tip amazingly. Help people out. If you can afford tipping right now, tip amazingly. Some of this is for the people. You guys are brilliant up here, by the way. All smarter than I am. We all have different opinions, but I appreciate your input. Number eight, we need to support our women and kids, our moms, our wives, our business owners, these ladies from the greenhouse that came up last week. Whether I agree with them or don't agree with them, we need to support women. There being teachers, mobs. Thinking about my old wife. Homeschool's not a win for every kid. Support the kids, too. I got to move off of that one, because I'm failing at home myself there. Guys, be smart. Keep reading the data. I came tonight, and I was going to present data, and I realized you guys sat through four hours of data. I'm not even as smart as the people who gave you that data. Keep reading the data. Hospitalizations are rising. There's some elderly being affected. Our death rate may rise, and that's scary. Hospitalizations and death are scary. Our active cases have gone down. That's amazing. Our curve actually bent, and so that's really cool. But number six, the woods may still get dark, as you guys know. So we're kind of kicking the can for another three weeks, see what happens. I think we need to respect you guys and, and see what happens. I'm going to go with number five, because I'm running out of time. Build models today. Things that create natural separation, some of our moving HIV through the aisles is really good, stuff that you guys have recommended. Maybe develop a maximum safety limitation. For all call them leisure businesses versus essential or non-essential. I think anything that's outside food, water, and shelter is leisure, frankly. Maybe some businesses are open days of the week with more people. But what can we look at over these next three weeks, that maybe in three weeks, we can open up? We can do something wise. We can use square footage models for people in the, in the business. So look at that. I stole this one from the city. Number four, forward Sioux Falls. We're a resilient city. Our people have done great. Outside of the Smithfield incident, we have about 200 total COVID cases. I know you guys know the data better than I do. That may be a little bit minimized, but it's not, not much. Stay diligent, look ahead. This is for the people of Sioux Falls. Respect, trust, and love. Give grace to people right now. There are half our cities scared to death. The other half of people want to open their businesses and have 500 people in them. Help others, respect their space, understand their worries, and appreciate their differences. I thank the council and the mayor for actually taking this week, reading data, making a decision to rescind it. We didn't even have to discuss it. That was pretty fantastic. Thank you, Paul. Number two, smile more. We all getting masks on. Maybe a smile becomes a thumbs up now, but don't let social media and social distancing become social decay. And lastly, for the city council and people of our city, just lead. I think this week, nice work on rescinding that, that vote.
Thank you.
No easy decisions. We'll all lose. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Laura Hubbell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. There's a few things that I'm concerned about. One is Jill Franken. I don't know what her authority is. I know she's the health, help me out here, health director. But what kind of education does she have? Is she a nurse? If she is, I'm a nurse. Nurses only learn procedures. We learn very little science. In fact, I had a science degree before I went to nursing. And the nursing classes were 98s. They weren't even 101. Okay, so, as a scientist, that's something, somebody I don't think we should be listening to. Also, the doctors at Avera and Sanford, they are employees, you know, of Sanford and Avera. They, a lot of times, cannot speak their own, because they are employees of the hospitals. The hospitals are both ACOs, which are accountable care organizations for Obamacare. They basically diagnose on patients on a rubric. It's basically a cookbook type of doctoring, which is why I was so against that in the first place. Also, doctors are not elected officials. Why are we listening to doctors who, they're not even here? I mean, they're not even explaining what their rationale is. They should be here to the public, and we can decide if their, their word is, is good enough for, for, for us. Also, this disease is 100% almost curable. They know it is hydroxychloroquine, and the erythromycin, azithromycin, and the zinc. It, in fact, I probably sent some of you, the, the New York hospitals are using this. It is peer-reviewed by medical professionals, that COVID is almost 100% curable. And we have 100,000 doses of it in South Dakota. But I talked to, secondhand, I'll, I'll give you this, to a pharmacist from Avera, and they're not using it. Why? Maybe I'm wrong, okay? But that's something I think we need to find out. Also, Sanford, I guess, is using the antibodies for this. But is anybody using what they know actually works, is the hydroxychloroquine? Also, Teresa's right. We do have a shutdown in South Dakota, but we're not allowed to call it that. We have a shutdown, just like any other state does. There are some states that are much more restrict than we are, but we aren't any less restrict than several other states. We do need to open. I asked you to vote against this. This was a companion bill for the previous bill that was our ordinance that was pulled. I asked that you pull this also. And I think the time that we could have been more effective was when the Chinese Communist Party was here in Sioux Falls, at Smithfield, four weeks, three, four weeks before the first COVID patient was diagnosed there. That would have been the time. They had boots on the ground in Smithfield, making sure that you had the UV lights, making sure that you had the distancing, making sure that you were planning with the, with the Smithfield, making sure that was not cross-contamination there to further, because they, they've suffered now, because of, I think because of actions that were not taken. Thank you. Please vote against this ordinance.
Thank you. Come forward, ma'am.
My name is Anne Lennars. I wrote something for my previous statement, but you've inspired me to want to say something else. So, I took in a young girl. She came to live with me in December. And like everybody in the world right now, and like everybody in Sioux Falls, she went through a massive amount of upheaval in her life. She was uprooted from everything she knew. Her whole life changed. And that hurt her. That hurt her deeply. So as a parent, as the one who has important decisions to make in her life, as the adult, sometimes I have to tell her no. Sometimes I have to tell her to do things that she doesn't want to do. But here's the thing, when I just tell her no, she always rebels. She will always do the opposite of the thing I want her to do. Why? Because she has had so much control taken out of her hands, that she is grabbing for it wherever she can. You guys right now have the unfortunate role of basically parenting Sioux Falls. That is what people are begging you to do, whether you want to be their parents or not. That's why you're getting phone calls, that people are playing basketball. That's why you're being bombarded by emails. That's why you're in this position, because people want you to do what parents do, and fix it for them. And at the same time, there are people here who want to take the personal responsibility. There may be the older kids in the family, right? But at the end of the day, do you know how I solve this problem with this child? I reason with her. I explain why I have to do the things I do. I explain to her why it is important that she does the thing I asked her to do. Why it's important to have a bedtime, even though she was allowed to stay up before. Why it's important to do your homework and go to school. Because it will benefit her now and in the long run. So, when it comes to an ordinance and rules that you're setting in place, trying to extend this, that impacts business, you have a boatload of people right now who have the informational capacity regarding economics of a five-year-old. I hate to say it, but most people did not pay attention during government class, or in history class. Most people do not know a single thing about economics. They did not go to college for it. The majority of the people that you are trying to give your information to have no clue why you want to make the decisions you do, and how they are going to impact the economy. So, what I would implore you to do, that whatever you do with this decision, either way, whether you extend it or do not, please invite the people into the discussion. If you want people not to feel like they have to rebel against your decisions, you have to inform them as to why the decision is being made, and what the long-term impact is going to be about whether they agree or disagree. This can't just be about a health issue. People don't understand People don't understand money at all. If you were to try to explain to somebody Kinesian economics, they are just gonna go blank. But if you actually inform people about things like, people don't know what the Federal Reserve is. Where did our stimulus money come from? What could it do to our society months or years down the road to do the immediate things that people are asking for right now? What's the difference between the government paying for it versus me stepping up and volunteering? If you actually inform people in that way, they can accept your answer more clearly. So, as I had mentioned in the previous, I would really like to see a forum, an open economic discussion, where you can start by providing two sides of a discussion. Here's what it looks like when we have an open economy, and here's what it looks like when we do not. Here is what the pros and here what the cons are, because people need to hear that there are both pros and cons to these decisions. So that they will stop going around, and I hate to say that this is happening, but it is, that they will stop seeing someone who disagrees with them and walking up and saying, "I hope you get coronavirus and die." It breaks my heart. I can't tell you. People who have wanted to hold a church service have been told this. Pastors, nurses who were just going to get a bite to eat, having notes left on their car windows, locally and nationally. It's not just here. If you want people to be less emotional, you have to balance it with reason. So, I implore you to just open up a public forum and discussion that explains some of these things to the people in a way that they can openly ask questions and understand whatever decision you make. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak? Come forward, sir.
I apologize. This is gonna be a little bit of more of a shotgun round. It kinda covers all three topics we discussed tonight, but I believe it fits here best. My name is Jason Bjorkland. I have a background in law enforcement, SWAT, military, farming, manufacturing, and transportation logistics. I also do medical research, specifically on heart disease and cancer. If we did not walk away from chemo in 2012 against our doctor's advice and treat my wife's cancer naturally, she would likely be dead. She's been cancer-free for seven years now. Last May, also against medical options, opinions. God blessed us with a miracle baby. I'm a disabled combat veteran with Gulf War Syndrome. I do not yet have a VA rating. I have five stents in my heart, and I need a sixth. I'm no longer sure when I can get my next surgery. My strength is now sufficient to seek employment, but the job market is tanked. Additionally, my wife is immunocompromised and on a medical furlough from work. We have burned through our savings to allow me to convalesce while we're in a, to convalesce, and we are in a bad place right now. And ironically, our personal struggles not why I'm standing here tonight. First, we must honestly acknowledge that scientists are fallible human beings, too, with varying levels of knowledge. Since ancient times, almost all scientific theories have been extremely political and fluid and constantly revised by new data and subject to intense debate. We believed things just decades ago, they're laughable now. We were supposed to be out of oil by now. We're supposed to be out of, we were supposed to have a global ice age in the 80s, and scientists actually wanted to spread coal dust on the polar caps to melt them. Next, it was Al Gore's hockey stick at the turn of the millennium. Polar caps are supposed to be gone. Our coastal cities underwater. All the polar bears would be dead. Just pandemonium. Yet, here we are again with faulty, with the same type of faulty hockey graph stick. And we're told if we don't flatten a curve, all of our parents and grandparents are gonna die. Every revised chart, the death rates have decreased, largely due to distancing are vulnerable, and most recent distancing are vulnerable, recent medical treatments, and accurate revisions to the numbers of infected. Unfortunately, he who controls the media controls perception. You need to listen with your head, heart, and your guts and use the gray stuff between yours. The most important reason I am here tonight is to warn you of the storm on the horizon that is gonna level our society. If we don't get back to work right now, our families and our farmers are gonna be financially devastated. Food shortages are looming. Crops in the south are rotting in the field due to lockdowns. Dairy farmers are dumping milk for lack of market and production capabilities. Livestock producers are running out of open markets. We have to make, and they have to make some horrible and possible choices right now. Do they waste valuable resources to maintain market weights and sell at huge losses because the supply exceeds processing capacity when the markets do reopen? Do they sell privately, directly, at cost or at a loss? Do they euthanize because they themselves cannot handle the capacity of their operation? We are gonna see sizable market inflation in food prices. On top of that, we have mortgages, utilities, loan payments, and other monthly revenues rolling in. Tax revenues will be down. Our city will struggle with its budget. We will have cascading bankruptcies, foreclosures, domestic violence, and suicides. Because of the pandemic, hospitals are forced to furlough workers, including doctors and nurses, due to hemorrhaging gross revenues. What kind of shape are our hospitals gonna be in when this pandemic is leveled off? I do not have time to address the other sectors of the economy. Trucking has taken a huge hit right now, and those waves will cause economic tsunamis in the near future. Along with economic hardship comes an increase in crime.
Thank you for your input tonight, sir, and for your service. Appreciate it. Thank Good evening.
It all comes down, again, it all comes down to trust. If you can't trust the people that are giving the information, because everything's based on a curve. If things would have been done a little bit different down in Smithfield, where would the curve have been? Where would we have 900 people down there the way it is now? Again, it comes down to JB in Worthington. What has the city done as a community to try to see if these people are carrying that virus? People that are watching this, one thing I can say, you're never gonna get this one and a half hours back in your life, because right now, we've wasted one and a half hours. Yes, we've talked a lot. We've done a lot of talking, but a lot of people haven't listened. And we all know how it's gonna be voted before it's even talked about. We have, when it's gonna be done, the city's gonna come out and say, "Oh, God, for what we did in this city, we saved it. We did everything right." But yet, if you had opened up businesses today and nothing changed, how do you know? How do you even know if you guys are even doing it right to begin with? People are tired of listening to the curves. People are tired of listening to this graph and that graph because they don't trust the people that are presenting the information. And until you're given the right information and you're able to listen to the person and truly can believe that person, then they probably will. We're not gonna have a vaccine for 12 to 18 months. It's gonna come up to September, October, November. What are we gonna do? Shut the city down again when we come back with the same COVID-19? What are we gonna do then? Are we gonna grow up, put our big boy pants on, and make a decision that, hey, it's time that we start taking some provisions on opening up the city? Stop hiding underneath our beds with our Charmin, wiping our noses because we don't need people to wipe our noses. If that's the case, then we're in trouble as a city. We can wipe our own noses, but you gotta be able to trust the community, the people that are running these businesses, to be able to tell you what they're gonna do in their business and how they're gonna do to change their businesses, to be able to bring their customers in, and to be able to look at their employees and say, "We're here for you." It's not that hard to do. Be nice to take the dialogue up a little bit.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item right now?
Good evening.
My name is Amy Renmo. I'm a nurse. I never in my life thought that I would need a piece of paper so that I can travel freely in my own country. I wasn't planning on speaking today. I was just here to show solidarity. But that's horrifying to me. Four months ago, you could never have convinced me that my job would have to give me a piece of paper so I could move about freely. And the other thing I wanna touch on is, you know, our rights are not given by you. They're given by God. And you know what else God has given us? He has not given us a spirit of fear. And so, what if you guys did this amazing thing, and you went out on a limb, and you did, you know, something like some of these other countries have done? Open this back up, and you know how good you would look in a few weeks? When they start using Sioux Falls as the model of like, "Look, look at this. Look what these people did." We are not given a spirit of fear because there is nothing to fear. My rights come from God, so I will travel freely without my paperwork. But the fact that this, you couldn't have convinced me four months ago that this would be what I would be looking at. And I think that you guys could, I mean, you could come out on top of this. You know, you rapid city's gonna look at you guys and say, "Look what they did in Sioux Falls. And look, it didn't affect the death rates. The death rates are falling. They're gonna keep falling. We're not given a spirit of fear. Be brave."
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
All right, we'll move into a discussion here. Any questions for Jill? Counselor Selberg? Could I, I just wanna throw out a quick reminder before we get started on this. Directors and city staff are presenting from downstairs in the conference room, and the reason that they are doing that, we have the chair spaced. For those of you at home that maybe can't see space, so we are adhering to the guidelines that we're preaching. And the reason they are presenting downstairs is to give more room to the citizens to have space to be here. So, they're doing that for your convenience. I know that there's a certain director that's been dragged over the coals tonight for not being here. She is here. She's being courteous to you folks to give you some room. So, those of you at home who think she was maybe taking this like there aren't people showing up and doing their work and being here, they are here, and we are setting an example, as I think those that are here can probably attest to. So, I just wanna make sure people knew that.
Thank you, counselor.
So, Jill is here. She's right below my feet right now. Do you have any questions for her downstairs on the item in front of you to extend this ordinance? Counselor Neitzert?
This is for the director or anybody who could answer for it in the administration. Has there been discussion about, rather than the hard limit of 10, looking at potentially some sort of a ratio based on square footage or something else? Because 10 in one place may be cramped in not being able to distance, but in another place, they may be able to have a good number more and still be able to easily social distance.
Mayor, if I might?
You bet, Jill.
Okay. When we crafted this ordinance, it was really to, as close as possible, align with the governor's executive order. And so, that is why you see those particular elements in place, is to be as close as possible to Governor Noem's executive order. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Jill? Look for a motion? Move approval?
Second, Sale.
All right, motion approved by Selberg, and that's seconded by Counselor Sale. Is there a discussion amongst the council on this? Counselor Staley?
I did wanna make just a piece of information, because I know people were bringing up the businesses that are hanging on. And we, today at 4 o'clock, we had, we have an informational every week at 4 o'clock, and I had asked the Bob Munt from the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, and then we had Dave Rosenboon from First Premier Bank in, and they came to give us a little briefing on the payroll protection program. And we had the first rollout of that, and that, of course, got utilized immediately. So, I just wanted to give you, for those of you who have businesses under 500 employees, it's really for small businesses, but there, Congress has got that moving through their body, and they're hoping that the president will be signing that. So, if you do need some assistance from the COVID impact, they told us today, "Contact your banker immediately. Contact your banker", and they have, they will help for up to eight weeks to pay your employees, to help your business continue on. So, this is a wonderful thing. Back to what Counselor Neitzert did ask about the 20%. The mayor gave us a proclamation a while back, saying that in our bigger businesses, that a guide would be to have 20%, to limit your capacity to 20% of the patrons in that building. So, that would be like Walmarts and Menards. We, in the resolution we're gonna bring later tonight, we are gonna talk about that, but we're, instead of just having patrons, we're talking about employees as well, because I think one of the things, when we come back to Smithfield, we are talking about employee safety. We're talking about making sure that they have their rights met and that they're getting the safety protocols that they need. And I know some of you have even acknowledged that, that perhaps that was a problem. So, just, and we also, these things were happening so quickly. The public has to realize that, what is it, five days we have to have between the first and second reading? We can't just slap something together. So, we're evolving. We're trying to be responsive. We're trying to be helpful. You know, none of us wanna come in and take away your rights. And by the way, in Sioux Falls, you don't have to have a piece of paper to say you're traveling anywhere. We're not doing that here. We haven't, that is not part of the discussion tonight. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counselor Neitzert?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple statements. The first is, what, I think, and we're trying, but I think we do need to try to be more clear in terms of what we're encouraging people to do and not to do, because I will tell you that even though we have this limit of 10, there's a lot of businesses that they're lucky to have one person in the door at a time. And that's largely because the message has been sent that people should be scared witless of getting anywhere near six feet of anybody. And so, I will tell you, I went and I got a massage today, and I wasn't afraid, and it was, you know, it was something that, you know, that I decided to do, and I decided to take the risk. And nobody wore a mask, and it was, and it was something partly that should have been very stressful recently, so I needed it. And also, I'm trying to try to support these small businesses and these personal services that are just getting demolished right now. I mean, the haircut places, they don't have to worry about 10 people because they've closed, because I don't even have 10 people in a day. So, I do wanna make sure that I express it. I'm trying to be measured here. I don't just unthinkingly accept what experts tell me. I look at all of this with skepticism. I've said that before. We're told that this curve is going to be about mid-May. I guess we will watch, and we'll find out. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know. And I do, and I've said very strongly, I continue to acknowledge the utter devastation that's being left in the wake of this, and I have a deep fear that a lot of the devastation may be because of policy decisions, not because of this pandemic. And that weighs on me heavily because I receive the calls of, you know, mothers in tears, you know, single mothers that don't know how they're gonna pay their bills, business owners that have worked their entire life and their business is being destroyed, and they're telling me they're a few weeks away. And so, I do think, there's, I don't know, but there's a chance that this comes to pass, but there's also a chance that we can find out by mid-May that we inflicted the biggest self-inflicted wound in American history on ourselves. And I'm really kinda 50/50. I don't know. Whichever way it goes, I certainly hope we learn from this, because I suspect maybe this goes away in the summer. We don't, maybe we don't know, and we're gonna have to figure out when. And we're going to have to figure out when this comes back, how we're going to do something sustainable rather than closing down an entire country for weeks on end. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to find a balance to deal with this. We're trying to learn as we go, but people are trying to make the best decisions they can, and it weighs heavily on us. But so I'm going to support this particular extension. This is going to take us to the middle of May. We'll find out. Businesses have told me, you know, at least I have some income coming in. I...all of this is basically follow the CDC guidelines except for the limit of 10 issue, which I do have a little bit of qualm with that. There's some things that I...a larger restaurant, I think, could potentially do something different and potentially work. But this is trying to balance things and we will find out. Thank you.
Other discussion amongst the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Sorry the delay if I'm speaking over someone. My apologies. Just wanted to chime in a little bit. One, I noticed today that there is, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask or not, but I did notice that there is another Board of Health meeting on April 28th. And I'm just curious if Jill wants to speak to that at all or if she can speak to that, if there are additional recommendations that are coming forward from that or if this is just a customary meeting with that. I feel that it aligns with this topic, just knowing what's coming down the road as well as we're looking at passing some of these regulations.
This is Jill Franken, and I'm going to have to share that I am not aware of that meeting having been scheduled. I think that may have been an error. We do not currently have an April 28th meeting scheduled. So I apologize. I didn't put that on there. I'm not sure how that got placed.
No, that's okay. No problem. I just saw it on there and I thought, "Well, gosh, I just was curious on what's coming next as we move through the fluid situation of that." I just want to talk a little bit about this ordinance and really next steps as we move about this. I took a call today from a friend that happens to be a legislator as well. And we started talking about just giving the businesses some certainty of those restaurants and other places, just knowing what it will look like as we move forward in opening. And I know right now we're bracing for...embracing for that surge and all of the extra positive results coming in for this COVID-19. But one of the things I want us to all be challenged in thinking about is those incremental steps, like Counselor Neitzert said. What can we do to allow some of these other places to slowly start preparing and saying when that time comes? Because let's be honest, most of these restaurants that did shut down and bars that shut down have no food and really very little supply left in even some of the bars and restaurants. And so just making sure that they've got ample time to prepare for that, I think is important, too. I will be supporting this as we move forward, just to give that certainty of the numbers coming in, of where we're going to be. But I'm so hopeful and just really looking forward to the time that we can start sharing about when people can really be fully back open. Thank you.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, will probably repeat what's been said a couple of times already. I do want to thank people that have reached out. And I'm doing my best, as we all are, to get back to all of you as soon as we can. And the passion and the interest and the input has been amazing. What I found really interesting about this whole thing since the get-go is I will have somebody approach me on one side of the coin and give me just a fantastic argument with eight to 10 points of why they're right and this is why we should do it and support it with some materials behind it. And I'll go, "Well, that was well done. I'll have to think about that." And it won't be a half hour to an hour. I'll have somebody on the other side of the coin come to me with eight to 10 great points. And while they're certain of what they're going to do and say and how we should move and why this is right and some materials to support it, and I'll go, "Good point." So I appreciate the certitude and the interest in how so many people feel so strongly. But there just is no simple answer to this. There just isn't. There's no spike in the football and we've got it all figured out. Nobody at any level of government, leadership, business ownership, citizenship, nowhere has been anywhere close to anything like we're in today. So you can...everybody can say, "I got it figured out. We know where we're going." We just don't. And the rules and the numbers and everything that we have to base good decisions off of change pretty much by the hour. So...but I do appreciate the feedback. We take it in. I think Counselor Neitzert said it best. We're trying to be measured, doing the best we can. So I would say, "Thank you for your passion out there. Continue to reach out. We are listening." I would say that I was definitely not for taking the next step of a stay-at-home order. I'm not for turning the screws on a little more that way, but I will be supporting this and this extension. And I do appreciate so many people that are taking personal responsibility and listening to the advice and doing what they're supposed to do, and I hope they will continue to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on the council? All right, let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 37?
Item 37, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 30, City Council, Subchapter, Presiding Officer Duties.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have addressed this topic the last two weeks in a row. It's simply necessary to move the election of our city council leadership back due to the postponement of our municipal election. If the election is indeed held on June 2nd, the installation of the newly elected council members will take place on the 16th, and the election of council leadership would take place at that point in time. As I mentioned, I've covered this on two other occasions, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone from the public who wants to speak on this item? Counselors, you got any questions for your colleague on this? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve? Second, Sale.
Okay, motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale. Any other discussion, council? All right, we'll vote on this, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to 38, please.
Item 38, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, setting the postponed joint city of Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls School District election date for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, and authorizing a joint election with Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties.
Tom, floor is yours on that.
Mayor, may I present from here?
You sure may.
I don't have a formal presentation. There's really no additional information from the last meeting. This would set the date of our election to June 2nd. This is based on House Bill 1298 that passed last month, postponing our election date. We were conducted in coordination with the Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties. We've already had an agreement with Lincoln County passed. The Minnehaha County will consider their agreement next week. Some of the key points of this is that, obviously, we have the requirement for the agreement. We will be conducting the election jointly and we will share expenses as they're incurred throughout the process here. We've proposed, and Lincoln County has agreed to, and in concept, Minnehaha County has as well, that we pay for a quarter of the cost of the workers and half of the cost of election polling places. And there are additional costs, obviously, that we incur in the normal course of an election. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Tom. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, you got any questions for Tom on this? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, my question is, and it just popped in my head after we passed Counselor Kylie's ordinance change, are we up to date with the changes for all of our campaign finance rules then by moving the date of the election or any of the...is there anything else? I guess it just all of a sudden popped in my head that, you know, we're changing when we install our leadership and when we do because of the date moving back. Are we covered on all the campaign finance? I think we still probably need a resolution yet to move our June meeting back to Wednesday yet. We haven't done that, but is there anything?
Yes, Counselor. So one of the good things about our campaign finance ordinance is that it's kind of a floating date, so it's the last Monday, one week prior to an election, which is the verbiage that's used. And so this is being moved to June 2nd, presumably. So that would make the through date, I believe it would be May 25th with a due date of May 28th. I don't think, although, given your question, I will follow up with the council. Our next due date would be the end of June. If there's a desire to temporarily move that, I think we can. However, we've had, you know, short periods between other reports before and they've been accomplished. Additionally, we don't have the termination requirement, as you may recall, so that may make it easier. And we will be considering a resolution to change the June 2nd date for the council meeting later on on the agenda.
And then the one other thing that stands out, then, the canvassing date is just based on when the election is in ordinance or it's not tied to?
Counselor, it's not tied to ordinance. It has to happen after the election. And traditionally, what we've done is hold the official canvas, the meeting following the week after the election.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tom on this, council? All right, look for a motion on this?
Move approval?
Second, Sale.
Okay, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any discussion? We'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to our first readings here.
Item 39, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 5605 Southwest Wind Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 11816-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, four to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 6, 2020. And if you could just hold on one moment, Mayor, I'm going to pull these slides over.
Okay. And I think Jason is on the phone with us. Jason Bieber with Planning?
Yep, Jason Bieber here, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application and the owner is Jeff Shakoski. It's located north of East 69th Street and east of South Southeastern Avenue. It's roughly .74 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing three twin homes for a total of six units.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? All right, council, you got any questions for Jason on this? All right, look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 6?
So moved, Neitzert?
All right, you got a second?
Second, Sale.
Seconded by Sale on that. Any discussion, council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 40, Jason.
And Mayor, if I could just remind the group in the conference room downstairs, once we...once you're done presenting and we start speaking here, can you put your mic on mute?
Yes, thank you, Tom.
Item 40, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 411 West 12th Street from the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, number 11784-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, four to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 6, 2020.
The applicant here is Paul Carlson. The owner is Julene Edwards. It's located at 411 West 12th Street, just west of Minnesota Avenue. It's roughly .26 acres in size. The purpose is the applicant is looking at constructing a new 3,000-square-foot retail building. And then they would also construct two apartments on the second floor of this retail building.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you have questions for Jason on this? Look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 6. Motion made by Selberg?
Second, Sale.
Seconded by Sale on that. Any discussion, council? All right, we'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move on to item 41.
Item 41, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rescheduling the business of the city from the scheduled city council meeting for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, to Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020.
Go ahead, Tom.
Mayor, this is, as I mentioned before, we just adopted an ordinance to move the election date to June 2nd. This would change our council meeting date from that previously scheduled Tuesday night to Wednesday.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Tom? All right, you got a motion on this?
Move approval?
Second, Sale.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve this item. Any discussion, councilors? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson? Erickson? Kylie?
Christine Erickson.
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes...
Have left the meeting.
That passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 42.
Item 42, a resolution declaring certain equipment of the city surplus and authorizing the gifting thereof to Minnehaha County Emergency Management.
Tom, you're on again.
Mayor, we will have somebody on the phone from downstairs.
Got it. Who's speaking on this item tonight?
Mark McVitch, Division Chief Fire Rescue.
Okay, hi, Mark.
This is simply surplus equipment. To be honest, it's a little light for fire rescue. Minnehaha County Emergency Management feels they can make use of it in the county with the county fire departments.
All right, thank you, Mark. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, you got questions for Mark on this? Look for a motion?
Move approval. Neitzert?
Second, Sale.
Motion approved by Neitzert, seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion, council? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote on it, please, Tom.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Item 43, please.
Item 43, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Kristi Metzger to the Arena Convention Entertainment Center Board, Suzanne Smith, Housing and Redevelopment Commission, and Janet Kittams and Brayden Nieses to the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you, Tom. Anyone from the public want to speak on these items tonight, any of these folks? I know on Sire Online, Counselor Starr, we posted some more information about each of these candidates. I know that was something you as counselors asked for, so there's a mini-bio, some bullet points of these folks, some good people there. So can I get a motion to approve these folks, to these boards, please?
Move approval?
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Selberg, it's seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion, council? All right, we'll vote on this group, please.
Councilmember Sale?[1760.73]
Yes.
Starr? Staley? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item, notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated April seventeen, twenty-twenty.
All right, then we have, uh, item forty-five, a piece of new business that was added after our deadline.
Item forty-five, a resolution urging the Sioux Falls community to follow safer-at-home practices in their homes, businesses, and daily life.
All right, uh, Counselor Staley, floor is yours on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this, this resolution, um, emerged after our meeting on Friday where we were having the discussion that the stay-at-home, um, ordinance was probably not going to happen. And some of us felt that, uh, we wanted to make some kind of statement to the public that we're not just going to drop everything. And so, um, through some discussion with my colleagues, we put this together and, um, one of the things, and I, I didn't know about this and I, I think that the public isn't aware, but that the Health Department was saying, that we heard from our medical experts, that through our safe distancing, social distancing practices, we've, we've leveled that curve off twenty-five percent. They want another ten percent. So, can we, I, instead of having that heavy-handed ordinance, we were kind of saying, let's do some encouragement to people to say, can you work with us? Can we continue to work on this for a few weeks and see if we can take that extra ten percent off? So this resolution just has some statements on here that I'd like to read. Um, a resolution urging the Sioux Falls community to follow safer-at-home practices in their homes, businesses, and daily life. And this is a, we're trying to be very positive here. We're, we're working on the council for a win-win because we know this is such a difficult, difficult issue. So looking for positive ways to help this thing, help us move through it. Whereas, the city council deeply appreciates our citizens as essential. And whereas, the city council deeply appreciates the efforts our citizens have put forth to mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen. And we do. We do, we know people have made sacrifices. Whereas, the city council deeply appreciates the sacrifice that our employees are making to keep our citizens serviced and safe. And whereas, the city council deeply appreciates the Sioux Falls business community and the existing efforts taken to mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen. And whereas, the city council recognizes the constitutional rights of every citizen. And whereas, the city council wants to keep all patrons and employees safe. And then the, the rest of these are just talking about echoing some of the things that the mayor has already talked about and he just, he's done a proclamation. If you go to the next page, I just want to touch on these. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Sioux Falls, residents are strongly encouraged to, A, remain in their homes except for occupational requirements and other solitary and/or household outdoor activities for the promotion of physical and emotional well-being and activities related to the provision of essential commodities and services. B, we encourage you to limit visits to the grocery and retail stores to once per week or use delivery services. C, residents who participate in organized religious activities are encouraged to do so via remote options as available. D, choose a designated shopper when it is necessary to visit grocery and/or retail stores, to do the shopping for the entire household in order to reduce the number of people in the store and to remain at least six feet away from others in the store. And by the way, thanks to those stores that are really taking precautions on this. D, E, whatever possible, residents should avoid taking any children still living at home with them on any essential cho- shopping trips. Again, just recommendations. F, uh, get drive-through, takeout, and delivery from local restaurants in lieu of dining out at restaurants. G, support local businesses that promote social distancing and demonstrate compliance with CDC guidelines. Our section two talks about health care. Residents of Sioux Falls should, A, call ahead to health care providers if feeling sick. B, attend necess- necessary medical appointments and follow the guidance of their medical providers. And C, use drive-through or delivery services whenever possible when needing medication or other necessary items from a pharmacy. Almost done here. We got section three, safe practices. And the mayor's been saying this a lot. Residents of Sioux Falls should continue to practice good respiratory hygiene, cover coughs and sneezes with a tissue, or use the inside of their elbow. Wash hands often, disinfect surfaces frequently, avoid touching their face, and adhere to social distancing guidelines. Additionally, consistent with the current CDC guidance, residents over the age of two who do not have trouble breathing should consider wearing cloth masks when they are in public areas outside of their homes, such as, by way of example and not limitation, the grocery store or medical clinic. Such masks should not be used as a substitute for social distancing, which is vital for slowing down the spread of COVID-nineteen. And then we're talking about the last section, mental health. A, be mindful of our mental health. B, engage in outdoor activity but not limited, but not, including but not limited to walking, hiking, running, or biking. And our mayor has so beautifully, um, kind of melded into this by his hundred miles in a hundred days, that we're saying you certainly can get out. Our bike trail is still open. Uh, C, be good neighbors to those around them and help others if able, keeping in mind that it remains critical to use the public practices that we are, uh, adhering to by the CDC. And D, support the local businesses to the greatest extent possible. Now, the, the thing that I, that I, actually, um, Counselor Starr and I brought this forward a few weeks ago, section, uh, five. And we tried to put this into the lingering ordinance and it didn't, it was too big of a change. But again, we think it's important that we have something that is protecting employees. So businesses, and the mayor talked about, about, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, having something, uh, where we're, we're recommending that in a bigger, a larger business, that you don't have more than twenty percent of it occupied by patrons, we want to include that employees in that twenty percent. Businesses not bound by the limitation of ten or fewer patrons as originally set forth in this ordinance, which is our lingering ordinance, as amended, are encouraged, whenever possible, to limit their patron and employee occup- occupancy to no more than twenty percent of their posted occupancy and institute a safe social distancing strategy for employees and customers outside of their place of business waiting to enter. Um, this document, we went, I went through with the city attorney. I had my colleagues look at it. And I will say that the mayor is taking, taking his, he's taking this energy to a, to a deeper level with his SOAR program that he's implementing. He's going to be going out and doing spot checks on businesses. He's going to be, uh, having a, a venue by which employees have someplace to come to versus just having to go back to their employers if there's a problem. Communication and responsiveness are going to be so important moving forward for the safety of everyone. So that, that's what the resolution says. Just a nice encouragement.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for your colleague on this? Counselor Nitzer?
Well, I will make a motion to approve and then I'll have a comment.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion approved by Nitzer, seconded by Counselor Staley. And then, go ahead, Counselor Nitzer.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Counselor Staley for this, uh, positive resolution. This kind of came about, as she said last week, as we were discussing, discussing this about how can we, you know, talk with one voice and, and really stand united with the administration and also just kind of send a message of empowerment and gratitude and encouragement to say thank you to the citizens for all that they're doing. There's so much that they're doing just because we've asked them to do it and they're doing it to, uh, help their fellow citizens. Uh, and really just empowering, uh, them to do it without having to, uh, mandate that they do it. And, and really just to encourage them just to, just to hold on just a little while longer. We, we, we just gotta, uh, keep up what we're doing for a little bit longer. Let's, let's just take these precautions and hopefully we're going to be getting a light at the end of the tunnel here. So this was really a, a positive thing and I appreciate it. And I also want to say that I'm really proud of the, um, the dialogue that I've seen on the city council the last handful of weeks. I think it's been really, really, um, positive and when we've disagreed, it's been incredibly constructive. And I think, uh, to a person, it's been, uh, uh, really, really great, uh, dialogue and I've so appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Selberg?
I'd just add, I'd probably, you know, I can't just say ditto because that was all pretty good. I would say, nice job putting this together, Counselor, and I appreciate that you reached out ahead of time and did that on everything here. And I, I do appreciate we're all working together here and trying to come together and do what we can. Yeah, we're one day closer. It's the only way I keep thinking about this and it's a cliche, but boy, sometimes when you think too far down the road, you go, oof. We'll just keep on plugging. So anyway, nice work, thank you.
Any, any Counselors on the phone? Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, I would ju- you know, despite some of the things that were, were said, uh, this, this evening and also the fact that we withdrew the proposal for the stay-at-home order, uh, I do want to caution the public that this is real. This isn't something that's made up. It's extremely contagious. It's deadly. Now is not the time to take our foot off the gas pedal. We, we need to continue to be mindful of what actually prevents spreading of this disease. And that is distancing ourselves from others. Uh, and I, and I do believe it is remain at a safe distance from others. That was something that was provided during public input that I thought was a sound, uh, was very sound advice. We all listened to the doctors in their presentation last Friday that the measures that we have taken thus far have gained approximately twenty-five percent of mitigation[1540.10]